I have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting order and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Ms. Emily Hamburg. Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Father Terry Hedrick, pastor of the Episcopal Church of Resurrection on 37th Street, to lead us in prayer. Father Hedrick.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as the City Council of Bel Air gathers this evening, we want to begin this meeting by looking to you in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for the promise that when we look to you, in Jesus's name, that you are present with us now by your Holy Spirit. So we continue to give you thanks, that you are a good and gracious God, abounding in mercy and steadfast love. We pray specifically this night for the city of Bel Air, especially for Mayor Jim Benage, the City Council members and all the leaders of this community, and especially for our first responders, law enforcement, EMS and firefighters. Tonight, we pray that you will reveal to the City Council the knowledge of your will and all wisdom and spiritual understanding in order that they may be fruitful in their service. Anoint them with the spirit of wisdom, charity and justice, that with steadfast purpose for the common good, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in the Bel Air community. Grant that they may love mercy, do justice, and walk humbly with you. Now, we ask all of this in the strong and wonderful name of our Savior, Jesus, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, our advocate and guide, one God, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the American flag. This evening, we have three proclamations, so I've asked Councilmember Emily Hamburg to read the Public Works Week proclamation.
Okay, National Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022, to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed public is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, including water, sewer, streets, public buildings, solid waste collection, landfill, wastewater disposal, code enforcement and engineering to provide these essential services to our citizens, and whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Bel Air, and he calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life.
Thank you. Our next one is Kids to Parks Day, May 21st, and Ms. Councilmember Greg David has agreed to read that proclamation.
Proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, 2022, to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas, May 21st, 2022, is the 12th Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters, and whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes and hypertension. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now therefore, Mayor Jim Benage does hereby proclaim, May 21st, 2022, as Kids to Parks Day.
Thank you. And then our last proclamation is Memorial Day, 2022. So to citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas, since 1868, Memorial Day has been uniquely an American day of remembrance on which we pay our respects and honor the memory of more than 1 million Americans who died in battle and made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and our freedoms. And whereas, in keeping with the traditions that have preceded us, many of us have friends and family members who have selflessly given themselves to the future of this great nation and who we honor on this day. And whereas, these soldiers were someone's child, spouse, parent, and it is important that we remember every day in this great nation that our freedom came at a price. And whereas, veterans have bravely served in all parts of the world, not only fighting for our freedoms, but for all mankind. And whereas, the city of Bel Air, Kansas, joins with other cities throughout the state of Kansas and the United States of America in honoring those who have given their lives and recognizing that their sacrifices were noble, their heroism unparalleled, and their dedication to God and country unforgettable. Now, therefore, I, Jim Benage, Mayor of Bel Air, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Bel Air, I do hereby proclaim May 30th as Memorial Day in the City of Bel Air and do urge all citizens to join in remembering our veterans. Move on to item six on the agenda, determine agenda additions. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. So this contains minutes of the May 3rd regular City Council meeting, as well as May 10th special council meeting. There are also a number of petitions for various new subdivisions or phases, as well as the coinciding authorizing resolutions for those petitions. So if any council member wants to have an extensive discussion of any of these items, please ask that that specific item be pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approving this consent agenda if no one has that request.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item eight, discussion and approval of appropriation ordinance. So this ordinance has... I've lost my notes on this, so I'm sorry. The ordinance is for $2,204,531. $474,000 is for Kansas Treasurer and Kansas Security Bank of Kansas for $1,028,000, $1,028,000. So the bond project dispenses total $510,000. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Motion to approve the appropriations ordinance 22-09.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David is second by Ms. Hamburg. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item nine, a Woodlawn update from MKEC. Do we have someone from MKEC today?
Mayor, I was contacted by MKEC yesterday, I believe, that they, the representatives that were going to be here had a conflict come up and aren't able to make it, so they asked me to move to the June 7th meeting.
Okay, all right. Move to June 7th then. Thank you. So item B, we have some... At our last meeting, council approved a resolution beginning the IRB issuance process for Catholic Care Center, including a resolution where fees were charged to any company obtaining an IRB. Catholic Care Center would like those fees reconsidered. Excuse me. So I invite the representative for Catholic Care to come to the podium and share your comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We appreciate being here. I'd like to introduce who's with me. Got Mike Burris, who is our board chair at Catholic Care, Brenda DeHaas, who is our chief financial officer, and Greg Williams, who is a regional representative with a company we partner with to help our quality and our delivery at Catholic Care. We thank you for letting us come today. Just a little bit of history. I know you know and love Catholic Care, being part of the city, because we feel that from you all the time. We've been here for 32 years. Every day, nearly 350 residents make Bel Air, Kansas, and Catholic Care Center their home. We have grown recently in our Shepherd's Crossing. We have folks from all areas of Sedgwick County and beyond, members of Western Kansas and beyond as well, that come make Shepherd's Crossing in Bel Air their home. We are what you call a life plan community, so we deliver all levels of care at Catholic Care. We've been hysterically, historically known over the years for providing at least 60% Medicaid, which is really a large number with the type of facility that we have and the large number. So we're very proud of the fact that we can serve some of the most vulnerable in our community. We've made improvements over the years to the campus, and we've also had so much support from the city to do that. We reside on 44.5 acres of a 100-acre total diocesan area that includes many amenities that many of our citizens of Bel Air also enjoy. We see many people walking on our campus, and we invite that to happen as well. We know that our employees, who are 260-strong, 15% of our employees live in the Bel Air area, and many of them frequent Bel Air amenities as they come and go to work and beyond. The pandemic has been an interesting impact to our industry this past year. It's increased our costs significantly. As you've been experiencing, we're experiencing inflation at an unbelievable rate. Our staffing crisis is probably the second pandemic that hit facilities like Catholic Care, making our staffing costs just outrageous to continue to stay in business. And again, as I said, the city has really helped us grow. They've helped us be a dynamic care campus for seniors. In fact, we see Bel Air and Catholic Care Center as a destination. People around the area really see the amenities that are offered in this part of the city as a destination home, and they all call this their home. Our ownership has changed a little bit. We've had a wonderful relationship with Via Christi all through our paths, St. Joseph and then Via Christi, and now more recently Ascension. Two years ago, we became 100% member of the Diocese, and the reason we did that, we have a very amicable relationship with Ascension. But our Diocese and our leadership and our board was very interested in us being a local entity and not part of a national healthcare company. So we broke out back on our own and became 100% Catholic Diocese of Wichita. We talked a little bit about COVID. That's just magnified all the challenges that senior care is facing. But we identified even before COVID that our campus needed to change. We needed to begin to grow differently with our campus. And one of the things that we knew is that we had a 32-year-old build, and so this new build was going to advance our care. In fact, Bishop Gerber, who once led the Diocese of Dodge City, stood out in that area when it was just a field, an old farmland area, and said, basically, we couldn't care for every senior in the world, but we should show the world how to care for seniors. And that's what we carry on our shoulders every day, is trying to make sure we live through his vision for Catholic Care, and he loved this area. His family had land in this area, and he really loves this area, loved this area amazingly. Prior to that, we knew that we had to really focus on human dignity prior to the COVID pandemic, and we had too many semi-private rooms. When you're 90 years old and you're taken from your home that you've known most of the time, their entire lives, as they've raised their family and come into a group living setting, it's not the time to have a roommate that you didn't know. So what we embarked on was a plan to really give more private rooms, private bathrooms to our area. And then we identified a very vulnerable area in geriatric psychiatry. And sometimes, the stigma of psychiatry really heightens an awareness with people. For us, we live that every day. We live that passion and that mission to really serve people who really are going through dementia and Alzheimer's situations and diagnoses, who are no longer able to function on their own. So many changes are happening to them that we really wanted to focus and highlight what we're already good at, and that's our memory care and our dementia care. So we embarked on a 20-bed behavioral health plan, which is senior behavioral health, and it will be a short-term hospital license, mostly coming within our industry, helping other nursing homes and other folks that are in assisted living and independent living get back into that least restrictive environment to live and to live a quality of life. In doing so, it's a pretty disruption to our campus. As you can only imagine, we're moving people from time to time from their home that they now know, which is their room or their apartment, into another area. So it's a big project. We wanted to identify things that would help our financial challenges, develop some new programs and serve the vulnerable, as Bishop Gerber's mantra was for us. So we're moving into behavioral health. We're not constructing anything new. We're not adding any new square footage. We're reconstructing our area to be accommodated for geropsych. We're improving our long-term care, memory care. There are so many times those folks don't understand who they're even in the same room with, and so we're going to all private rooms for our memory care. And then our post-acute area, again, due to infection rates and some of the acuity or the high medical need that we're seeing, we're making our PAC unit private rooms with private bathrooms. You can only imagine how that was enhanced during the pandemic. Semi-private rooms was not favorable in our type of setting. It was very difficult to manage. And the pandemic was really, has been, a two-year and beyond major, major project for us to get through each day. We're doing really well, and we have great partnerships. In fact, we continue to partner with fire and police and everyone here in the Bel Air area. So we're excited. We're upgrading these individuals' home, their homes. Even if it's a room, it's a small room, we're giving them the best amenities and upgrades that we can give them. We want to serve them in a better way, and this project is allowing us to do that. It's been a three-year project for us. So just to give you a little history of, this has really been a plan in progress. COVID kind of really enhanced what we were doing, but we're so excited to get this project moving. And we expect, after we get through these last hoops, to start construction or reconstruction, as what we call, start it as soon as the middle of June. So we're pretty excited to finally get there. So getting to the financing piece, this tax exempt loan requires IRB approval from the city, but it's not a traditional bond. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know about what our situation is. We are putting together a $20.2 million tax exempt loan through an interest bank. We looked at regional and national banks, and our best partner was a local bank, which fit right in line with what our goal and our board's goal was, to stay as much local as we can and to really work with our leadership in this community. We are also, also, part of this $20.2 million loan is consolidating a $10 million loan we had through Ascension Health that was once a Sedgwick County loan, but then when Ascension came in to the Via Christi system, they consolidated that into their debt. And so it's re-establishing that as just one debt service instead of having the two. It makes it a little bit easier on Brenda to manage that. And Ascension's been a great partner. They didn't demand that we do this, but we felt like the timing was right, since we were no longer a joint venture partner with Ascension Health. So of the construction, that 10 million, nearly 10 million, is actually bringing that additional bond that was debt service that we had into it. We also did a little bit of homework, and I know you've done your homework too, so I don't want to, you know, overemphasize this, but most cities in Kansas do not issue a, have an issuer's fee. They waive that. There is an annual fee that you have to have. There's paperwork. There's things that you have to file. We understand that. We want to be a good partner with that. We understand the administrative costs for the city and the responsibility that we have, helping you pay your expenses, because we want to be a good citizen in the city of Bel Air. We love being here. You can't even imagine how fun it is. Every day, I drive up to Catholic Care and pinch myself how beautiful it is and how beautiful Bel Air is and kept. We really enjoy this kind of rural setting that we have tucked away back here, and that's how we look at it. Our circumstances really are different than most of the IRB city processes. We would appreciate consideration for a 2.2%, 2% fee on the par or estimated loan of 20.2 million. Again, originally, it said not to exceed 25 million. We don't expect it to be at 25 million. We're working on all kinds of value engineering and everything to keep within, even with inflation within the budget that we've set for this project. So we're proposing for your consideration of $40,400 payment to the city as opposed to what was originally issued. We also know and recognize that there are sometimes a 1% issued, and you've already done some consideration for Catholic Care. We appreciate that. Our current challenges and circumstances, we would really appreciate some additional consideration. Our IRB is considerably higher than any other that the city's... And it's really due to the refinancing as to why ours is higher. There is no cost or loss of revenue or obligation to the city, other than we know that there's administrative costs, and we recognize that. Two-thirds of the current city IRBs are under the $40,000, so we feel like we're paying a fair share for what it takes to get this done, and it puts us in line with the average contribution to the city. And we really want to be a person that contributes too. We rely on your police force and your fire department as well. So we would like to be a participant in that. This does leave three companies at a higher rate for a lower total IRB, but again, in addition to being, you know, this, we believe our situation does not include a tax abatement or any loss of revenue for the city. And we do appreciate our tax exempt status as it is. We know that that's a gift that we are given. We also know that we are challenged with, again, serving the most vulnerable, and it's a very, very difficult industry to be in right now. I know you read the papers and hear on the news. Senior care is very difficult. So any advantage that you could give us, we would greatly appreciate, and we would take any suggestions to be even a better citizen of Bel Air, because we really enjoy being here.
Well, thank you for that review of what your plans are and the organization and things. We will be discussing that in this evening's agenda. We have a couple items for the whole project, so please stand by, and we'll have more discussion. All right? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, so as part of the IRB process. Oh, so, okay. Your order and my order is different. Okay. I apologize. So I will go back and do that. Citizens concerned. So if there are any citizens here that need, that would like to speak with the council, you're certainly welcome. Hearing none, we'll move on to the public hearing for Catholic Care Center. So as part of the IRB process, a public hearing is required, and public notice for each hearing was published in the city's website as required by federal tax regulations. This hearing gives interested parties the ability to address council on an IRB issuance. If there is anyone present who would like to address this topic, please come to the podium, speak to the microphone, and state your name and address before giving your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes in the interest of time. If more time is needed, you may request an extension from the mayor. So do we have anyone who would like to speak concerning the IRBs for Catholic Care Center? So I see no one wanting to come and approach and talk to us, so this requires to close the public hearing. We would need a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Smith, or Mr. David to close the public hearing, and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Hearing is closed. So we'll move on to reports of council.
and tour the CCUA plant with the manager, Jacob Coy, and I appreciate that, seeing how all of that operated. Attended the Bel Air Lions Club last Wednesday and heard Dr. Chuck Knowles of McAdams Academy speak about what they're doing with kids that have been expelled or have no other options here in the metro area. The only other thing I would mention is just remind citizens that this Saturday is our spring cleanup. Have things out at 7:00 a.m. and check the website if you need further information about what's, what the rules are for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
You're good. Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Smith.
Only thing I have to report on is that I did attend the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting this past Saturday in the city of Mays. We did have three county commissioners there, Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Howell, and Commissioner Cruz, along with the county manager and some of their finance staff. The meeting topics were largely focused on how the county is leveraging the funds that they've received from COVID. They, a while back, had sent out a request to local areas to understand what the need might be for those COVID funds, and upon reviewing all of the needs, including their own internal, ended up deciding that they actually needed all of the funds for themselves. So, they spent quite a bit of time defending that decision and explaining to the local government leaders why they didn't get any of the money that they thought that they were going to get from the county. And so, there was some spirited discussion on that matter, but they did provide a very thorough presentation and details on where all that's going to go. They did also make us aware that they're going to be doing some, as they start the budget process, there'll be some local meetings coming up, and keep an eye on county communications for when to attend those hearings. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're good. Thank you. And Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I was also fortunate to be the guest of Jacob Coy, our CCUA manager, and Art Tinbrook and their crew, and we learned a lot about how the utility operates and got to see all the SBRs and really understand what it means to be in a rowboat out there in that middle of the country.
Not a cool thing.
Anyway, thanks, thanks to Jacob for hosting us.
Good. Yeah. Yeah. Touring that facility is interesting and quite an eye-opener to what really happens with all the sewage and such. So, they will do tours for, for other citizen groups as well. So, if anybody's interested in doing that, please get ahold of Mr. Jacob Coy. Move on to manager's report. So, first of all, congratulations are in order for Brooklyn Hicks at Northeast Magnet High School for winning the People's Choice Award as part of Congressional Art Competition on April 23rd at a reception for work called "You Did It." This was done in a mixed media. It's always great to be able to recognize people in Bel Air for getting such great recognition. So, as with every spring, we get rain and accumulates in various containers in our yards. This stagnant water becomes a place for mosquitoes to breed. To help reduce mosquito population, I encourage all Bel Air citizens to look around your property to assure you do not have any of this stagnant water setting around to help mosquitoes to multiply. Bel Air Public Works painted stop bars at 53rd and Rock Road. Just a reminder, these are intended to be the place where one actually stops for the stop signs. Often observe drivers who do not truly stop at stop signs. They make rolling stops, which technically are not legal, and risk one rolling into traffic. I encourage all drivers to observe these stop bars by making a complete stop wherever they have been painted on the road surface. Yesterday, Sedgwick County Sheriff, Sheriff Easter made a Zoom presentation concerning an alarming increase in fentanyl overdoses. Mays is about one-half the size of Bel Air, but they recently had four teenagers overdose on fentanyl. One didn't make it. So, this drug is affecting urban communities like Bel Air. It's a very deadly drug. The campaign out there says one pill can kill. I've asked our city manager to make available on our website some information Sheriff Easter has provided as a resource for parents in our community. Let's do what we can to help prevent the next overdose death from this potent drug. On Wednesday, May 4th, I attended the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce meeting at Clinic in a Can. It was good to see firsthand how Clinic in a Can is repurposing shipping containers for their mobile clinics. I believe they're, we were told, four of these clinics are being shipped to Ukraine. On Tuesday, May 10th, I attended the WAMPO Policy Board meeting. They approved an updated tip, which includes 45th Street between Woodlawn and Oliver for 2026, but without any commitment from funds. Rather, this project is first in line for any funds that may remain after they fund seven other projects. There's often carryover funds, but with inflation, that is less likely. Often, those carryover funds are in the range of $1 to $2 million, not enough to fund at 45th Street at an estimate cost of $11 million. So, we will look, continue to look for funding options to get this project underway. We also, we were also provided with an overview of the next phase of Kellogg Going East. This is the top regional priority from the KDOT Combine meetings last fall. So, Friday, May 13th, I attended the K254 Corridor Development Association meeting hosted by Nkechi. We reviewed the, provided input to the KDOT draft RFP for the corridor management plan. We also talked about having one person from each member city on the selection committee that would review proposals and hold interviews with some of those firms that make proposals to develop this management plan. The concept is to have community input, including individual citizens who want to provide input. The safety committee spent about $4,000 in QuickTrip gift cards for the police to hand to, police along the corridor to hand out to high school students, they, when they observed the students wearing seat belts. These will be for students at Heights, Northeast Magnet, Circle High School, and El Dorado High School. Trying to encourage safe driving practices. On Saturday, May 14th, I attended the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, along with Councilmember President Smith. We heard a presentation of Sedgwick County's efforts on the ARPA funds, as was previously discussed. We also heard about a coordination of the bill applications, and that's a bipartisan infrastructure legislation, so it's abbreviated Bill. I was encouraged by bill funds as, because the bill funds, about a month ago, I attended a presentation from KDOT that said loan proposals would not go far with U.S. Department of Transportation. So, hopefully, we can get some, some of our infrastructure needs in a package presented by Sedgwick County that will include other cities' needs. Getting such approval, such proof may be our best move forward with addressing arterials in Bel Air. And just prior to this meeting, I attended the open house at Bel Air Recovery. It was always good to see what Bel Air businesses are doing. To date, we have received, we have not received any additional applications for Ms. Wynn's city council seat. Three people who applied for Dr. Schroeder's seat have advised me they want to be considered for Ms. Wynn's seat. These are Ashley Markley, Carl Bush, and Edgar Salazar. The other three candidates have not, to date, advised me whether they want to be considered. They and other potential applicants have until this Thursday, May 19th, to let me know of their interest. After May 19th, the application phase from Ms. Wynn's seat will be closed, and we will move forward with the state applicants at that time. I am hoping we can vote on our new council member at our next meeting, June 7th. So, I will restart the Coffee with the Mayor meetings on June 18th at 9:00 a.m. in the senior room of the City Hall. Citizens and council members are encouraged to come and discuss anything on your mind. I will now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to cover a couple of items. Since we've had Ms. Hamburg join the council, we are now, we have a different quorum. So, quorum is the minimum number of council members, not including the mayor, that are required to meet, to have a meeting. Prior to Councilmember Hamburg joining, quorum was two council members, again, not including the mayor. And now that she has joined, our quorum is three members. So, in order to meet, we have to have three council members. If we have any items that require two-thirds majority, such as overturning a failed vote or a charter ordinance or other statutorily required two-thirds-majority items, those require three members in, under the present quorum. Once we have our full council, the only thing that will change, quorum will still be three. However, the only thing that will change is our supermajority requirement will go up to four members to vote in the affirmative when we have an item requiring the two-thirds majority. And of course, we can always have less than a quorum to recess or adjourn a meeting. It's just practical. So, with that, wanted to talk a little bit about the public comment period. So, I have a colleague in Manhattan, Kansas, and Manhattan decided to, just recently passed an ordinance limiting public comment or a policy. I don't know how they passed it, but they passed a measure limiting public comment to five minutes per person. Prior to that, they didn't have a limitation on public comment, and they, their meetings are also in the evenings, so they would start at, let's say, six or seven, but the meetings would consistently go until 1:00 a.m. And those late meetings, without any regulation and any limitations through policy, created a difficulty, you might say, for people to actually engage. You had people who were willing to engage till 1:00 a.m., but it was harder to record, to watch the meetings, to provide those ADA measures, so they recently decided to limit public comment to five minutes. So, we just kind of reflect on the idea that public comment is not required. The right to attend a meeting and observe what the council is doing is, is required, but that public, that public comment portion is not. However, when a city decides to allow public comment, the First Amendment right attaches, and you must treat every person speaking equally. So, if you give someone 10 minutes, you should expect to give the opposition or the next person 10 minutes. So, that's why cities generally regulate public comment, and I know we get people who are pretty passionate about things, and it's why the mayor has to kind of sometimes use those resources carefully, so that way, we can continue to have meetings, allow as many people to engage as possible by keeping the meetings within a reasonable amount of time. This council has reviewed the public comment, Ida, policy about two years ago, maybe, in conjunction with reviewing the workshop policy. It might be something to review again, but just that lesson from Manhattan as far as extending that comment period. And lastly, just to let you know, our backflow numbers are, with 15 days or so left to turn in reports through your contractor, backflow numbers, we have 243 of 1,145 backflow devices reported on. So, we've got 200 of the whole lot. So, we expect to have lots of, of people turning in reports in the next 30 days. And some contractors like to do the whole city and then turn them in at the end of the season, so that's what we're hoping for.
You're going to be busy last week of this month, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Rock and 53rd is now a four-way stop. That was done about a week ago. The reason came from the trans-system safety study based on traffic patterns there, that a four-way stop would reduce the amount of accidents that have been taking place there and better for traffic flow and safety. Fortunately, we have had no accidents to date. When you change the traffic pattern, sometimes that can happen. I think what's benefited us is 254 and Rock is closed, so traffic is naturally down. And again, the, that's a KDOT project. They're putting a turn lane in. It would be eastbound, turning south on Rock. They're installing a turn lane, and that should be done in about 60, maybe 50 days now. It started a week ago as well. But that'll be a nice change for people that are coming 254 to get down on Rock, that there'll actually be a turn lane there instead of just pulling off on the shoulder. And then, the last item is city offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th in recognition of Memorial Day. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're good. Thank you. So, move on to item 13A, is Consideration of Ordinance Amending Resolution R2212. So, what's be considered is an amending resolution that has been, has the fee portion blank, and this has to do with Catholic Care Center that was, our, this, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Cindy LaFleur.
Cindy LaFleur. Okay. Cindy, you're Cindy LaFleur. Okay. Very good. So, Ms. LaFleur had, had, had talked about in comment period. So, in our packet, the city manager detailed how this particular fee was calculated, as well as what has historically been charged in Bel Air for previous IRB issuances. There are three options for us to consider. If you're comfortable with the fee that was included in the original resolution approval or our last meeting, you can simply deny this resolution, and that previous resolution would stand with fees included. Or you can approve the amending resolution, but will need to insert a fee or waive the fee. And lastly, you can table the amending resolution, but I believe Catholic Care is wanting to finalize the IRB as soon as possible, because they want to start construction in June. So, they need to get some money moving forward, right? So, they may not have time to wait two weeks. So, I support, yes, I support helping any nonprofit that is working to help poor, disadvantaged, or infirm. Catholic Care and Homestead Senior Residences, which we also, on tonight's agenda, both fall within this nonprofit, helping the poor, disadvantaged, or infirm. We've been given some analysis by Ziegler Capital Investment Advisors for Catholic Care Center, and Mr. Lash has provided an overview of what other communities have been doing with fees for IRBs. The issue tonight is, do we want to stay with the original fee structure, or do we want to consider reduced fees for nonprofits as being requested? So, any questions for Catholic Care representative or bond counsel or staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
As I understand, we are one of the few cities that, that does charge such, such a large fee, more than just the, the cost. And I also understand that we don't want to lose money on it, but this isn't a revenue project for, for the city of Bel Air. So, I just wanted to clarify with Ty, with the city manager, would the $44,000 cover our expenses?
Yes. I think they would.
So, is, just so I understand, in my mind, the proposed 2% or .2% fee, the $44,000, that would be the initiation fee or origination fee? Is that what that is?
Yes. That's, I, that's kind of what I understood from Cindy, that the origination fee, they're proposing $40,000, and then the $2,500 annually administrative fee, I think.
No, this would be in lieu of, other cities charge $2,500 annually.
Yeah. Okay. So, in lieu of that as well. Okay. So, the, they're asking for a $40,000 origination fee, and that would be the only fee that would be assessed.
On our, on our current number, we're doing this $4,400.
Okay. $4,400. Okay. $4,400. Okay. Okay. Get the zeros in the right places, man. Okay. And that is, is an origination fee, and then you're proposing no annual fees beyond that? Or the $2,500 annual fee?
That this would be all of rent or you couldn't spread it out over the life of it, to give it throughout life, the fee that this would be the total.
Okay. This would be the total fee that you'd want to pay. It's the $4,400. Okay. Just want to make sure we are on the same page, what you're asking. So, okay? Thank you. So, Seth, help clarify. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
I'm sorry. I misstated the number, but, but, so the $4,400 would cover our expenses, we think? Or do you need time to, we need to round that up somehow to ensure it?
I think that's kind of a difficult, you know, the, the fee that, there, it's more than just covering expenses. I mean, any fee, you know, would cover some portion of expenses. So, I, I, that's kind of a difficult question to answer. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate the presentation tonight and the information about...
I think that's kind of a difficult... You know, the fee that... It's more than just covering expenses. I mean, any fee, you know, would cover some portion of expenses. So that's kind of a difficult question to answer. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Well, I certainly appreciate the presentation tonight and the information about what the Catholic Care Center is doing. I also really appreciate the work that Ty has done to kind of give us information about how other fees and other organizations and other parties in this transaction are thinking about fees and distinctions they make for nonprofits versus for-profit entities. There's a lot of information there, and I'm really excited about the work that Catholic Care does here in our community. The concern that I have is not necessarily making a fee adjustment for Catholic Care, it's making fee adjustments on an individual organization basis. I'm really open to looking at our fee schedule and how we have that fee schedule structured, and maybe it needs to be revised. But I do worry about kind of getting into, you know, for each organization that does an IRB, for each nonprofit or for-profit entity, having to kind of determine what is the right fee structure on a per-organization basis. That doesn't feel like a healthy or consistent or fair way to apply policy. And so I would wonder if it might be more appropriate for us to look at that fee schedule and fee policy versus thinking about the fee for this specific organization. And that's kind of where my head's at.
Yeah, I kind of agree that we would need to do that, because if we... Whatever we do here, we would probably need to make available to other nonprofits as well, and we will be talking about Homestead later in the meeting. So I agree with the consistency. Unfortunately, we don't have the time for a longer discussion with this particular project as far as if we're going to make any changes. So... But we're here now, so let's have the discussion, what we can.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
So as stated, I think our fee structure, whatever that ends up being, should be certainly adequate to cover all of the city expenses. We're trying to assist our partners here in Bel Air, but we're also trying to take care of the taxpayer. However, as the director mentioned, there's not a great increase in costs as the increase of the bond goes up. So there should be some cap to it or some graduated scale rather than a set percentage, would be my thought.
Ms. Hamburg.
First of all, before I ask any questions, I appreciate Catholic Care being here. I've had family members that have been residents there, and I've volunteered in the past there. I appreciate your dignity from the womb to the tomb, as they say. So I say that before I just, you know, ask some clarifying questions. So we talk about costs, and we're talking about this originating fee covering administrative costs. Catholic Care as a nonprofit, just so I understand, they're not, as a nonprofit status, they will never pay property taxes here moving forward, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I would imagine with the nature of the business and the residents, what is the breakdown in terms of fire services and that sort of thing that Catholic Care uses as being a part of this community?
The fire is provided by the... And EMS is through Sedgwick County. So I do know, I know, we looked at it probably five years ago. We were looking at, every so often, the city will talk about, you know, is it better to have Wichita Fire versus Sedgwick County Fire? So we look at, you know, is there options to do anything different? And one of the questions was, at that point, was, you know, does Station 37, which is here in Bel Air, does it actually respond to a lot of the Bel Air calls, or does it go outside? Did they go outside to Wichita? Where do those calls go? And I remember, I don't remember the exact number, but it seemed like it was over 50% of their calls go to Catholic Care. Obviously, there's a lot of issues there. Again, that's the fire district. The city of Bel Air, we do have our police go as Ms. LaFleur stated, that we do respond there. In fact, I know the chief's currently working on an issue that someone was taking a substantial amount of money from them via a phone, one of those phone things. So they're currently working a case there right now, trying to find who that person was. Looks like they're out of state, but they're spending time working on that. So they do on occasion go down and work issues down there at Catholic Care that come up.
That's kind of my issue with this, too. I don't mind that we only cover the cost of the bonds, but I... It bothers me that Catholic Care, I know they're a charitable organization and all that, but they're not paying for the basic services of the community like fire and police and roads. And this is the only thing we have that we can charge for. And clearly, we can't charge enough to pay for all those other things, but I would think as a good citizen, you would want to help pay for some of the other costs that you use, especially if 50% of the fire calls are going to Catholic Care. How do we reconcile that with not paying any taxes?
Can I make one statement, Mayor? As far as the taxes, we do, on our Shepherd's Crossing Independent Living phase, we do have a payment in lieu of taxes.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Can I ask if you're going to make comments? Please come to the podium so you're on the microphone, because these are recorded and broadcast, so thank you.
So I'm Brittany DeHaas, the CFO for Catholic Care, and I do just want to state that we do have a payment in lieu of taxes that we pay for the Shepherd's Crossing Independent Living. It's just under $25,000 per year that we do pay for the newer phases of the campus.
And that's considerably less than anybody else in town pays.
Correct.
That barely covers the existence, is what I'm saying. It's a pittance compared to the expense that's being run up.
Correct. We are a not-for-profit organization, which it does come with tax benefits for that.
Not-for-profit doesn't mean don't pay my own expenses.
If I could just take a minute, as we were just talking about public comment, so just to create sort of a forum so that we don't have... We have to be consistent and repeat patterns. So if the mayor would like to acknowledge Mr. Welsh, Councilmember Welsh, and then if the mayor decides to direct and open the floor for some response, that would be okay, but it would need to be facilitated through the mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have any more questions?
I think I just said it. It bothers me that you're getting a free ride on everything, and now you're asking for a bigger free ride. That's my opinion.
Any other questions, discussion? Certainly don't want to cut it off, but... So I'm hearing some concern or some saying, yeah, let's do the cost, whatever the cost may be. It's a little bit unquantifiable at this time, because we don't really know those that cost, but there's a schedule there, a couple proposed schedules, and some saying we probably shouldn't do anything. So I will entertain motion either way or additional discussion, however you want to handle it.
Just one more comment, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly. Mr. David.
So as far as the nonprofit goes, you know, we, the municipality, have ways to encourage our business partners, to encourage businesses here. And we do different things with tax incentives for the taxable businesses in town. We certainly give tax incentives to them. We can't give any of those incentives to the nonprofits. The only type of incentive we can do is try to make the fees as low as possible. And from what I've heard, right now, we are not competitive, that we are one of half a dozen cities in Kansas that charge a fee over a filing fee, type of maintenance fee. So if we really want to be a business, municipality that encourages business, we should encourage that for the profits and the nonprofits, that's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welsh.
I would rebut that, that we give a huge incentive to the nonprofits, because we have not, we do not ever charge them property tax. The businesses that come in that we do IRBs, they only get a 10-year abatement. It's not a forever eternity abatement. So they do eventually come onto the tax rolls and contribute quite a bit to the city's coffers to pay for expenses.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to say, I think it's important to acknowledge that the nonprofits add a lot to our community in ways that aren't through taxes. Their meeting needs that the community has, and I do think we need to appreciate that. I don't have any problem adjusting the fee. My main concern is just doing it by changing policy and being consistent with it and not doing it on a one-off basis. And I don't feel like we have enough information about our costs and how we should be thinking about that fee or enough capability on the agenda tonight to actually review that policy and set new policy and then fairly apply that policy tonight. And so that's my concern with moving forward on that.
I certainly can appreciate that. It's kind of a situation where we're tied up with a timeframe that I understand. And to... So might I suggest that we consider fee structure for these two entities, both Catholic Care and Homestead Residences? I mean, that's another item on the agenda, but it's going to have to be equally considered for tonight, and then maybe have a workshop discussion in the future about what do we do with these kind of things going forward, so that we can both get this addressed and then address the long-term picture as well. Any ideas there?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I would say the only danger there is if we decide to do something different from policy for these two entities, and then through the discussion and through the thorough review of the policy, we decide that we're actually not going to change our approach to this, then we've kind of created this situation of inequality amongst our approach to applying the policy. And so my default would probably be to apply the policy as it kind of currently is until we've actually had the time and the right information to determine it's appropriate to make changes to that policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
One policy change we could do very smoothly and quickly here is just the cap that was mentioned, you know, $75,000 cap, whether it's 50 million or 10 million. That cap would probably always cover expenses, and it would be easy to implement for all parties who petitioned.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Would we have... Thank you. Would we have information on how that might affect our budget or things that we planned for from a fee perspective? I know when we go through the budget line items, there's a certain amount that Ted projects as fees. I just don't, I don't have a good feel for how, if we make a change to policy on like our total cap, how that might affect those projections? And does that trigger us needing to review the budget and do a budget amendment and those types of activities?
So we don't, because during the year, we don't know how many, if any, IRBs that will issue. We don't typically budget for a fee, because we wouldn't know what that would be. The effect that it would have is, you know, every year, we, in fact, we talked about it at our workshop, you know, we look at, we're going to spend, our budget is $500,000 for streets, and then we come back and say, well, you get a million to spend. Well, that's because of revenues that come in above what was projected. So that's what you would see is less revenues for capital expenditures.
That's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welsh.
I don't think we should make an off-the-cuff change to our policy tonight. And like I said, I'm not against not charging more than it costs for the bond process, but I think we need to let Ted weigh in on what it really costs before we just say that there's a certain amount that it doesn't cost anymore to process, because I don't know for a fact that that's true. And one of the things that bothers me about this is we keep talking about Catholic Care like it only serves Bel Air. It does serve a larger area. If we were a small town out in western Kansas, we'd probably be all over this because it served our town, and it would be important to our town. But it serves such a big area that only a portion of us is important to our town. So, you know, we don't have other taxing entities or whatever that are in on this and spending their money.
Mr. Mayor.
We're the ones being asked to do all the giving here.
Mr. David.
Don't you think it serves our town by employing 250 people, being one of the largest employers in our town, and employing many of our own residents? So we get taxes from that? Just by being a large employer, I think deserves our consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welsh.
We don't get any taxes because of employees, and there's only by their number, I think, about 30 employees that live in Bel Air? Because she said 15% of 240? Is that about the right number, 30, 35, 40? Okay. It's a small number, but again, we're not, the city isn't benefiting from this. If we had a complex like Wesley Medical Center, where there were all kinds of hotels and restaurants around it that would be generating taxes, it'd be a whole different scenario than we have just a thing out here that's costing the city money. We're not costing them city money. We're paying for services like police. It's not a huge cost, don't get me wrong, but I think it's a much different scenario.
Ms. Hamburg.
That was one of my concerns as well, is that it's a bit of a unique situation where only have 15% of these employees that live here in Bel Air, and additionally, you have 260 employees that drive up and down. Our roads were called to maintain every day, so that was another one of my concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welsh.
I don't think this is going to make anybody happy, but my motion would be to table the resolution.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welsh to table, and second by Mr. David. Any discussion concerning tabling this resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I... Can you state, help me understand your intent with tabling it?
I want to give Ted time to tell us what the real numbers would be for expenses, and for the city to come up with a whole process for how we should handle IRBs for tax-free entities.
And I guess if we were to table this motion, this is probably a question for our city attorney, what is the current status of the IRBs if we table it? Since we have passed a resolution prior to this, and this is an amending resolution, what does that do?
So yes, that was something in the back of my head, and I would love to defer to our bond counsel on our flexibility and timing on the resolutions as drafted in light of where we are in the big picture.
Sure. Good evening. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell. I think if the amending resolution is tabled, nothing changes with respect to what you've already done, which is adopt an intent resolution saying you're willing and able to issue the industrial revenue bonds, subject to certain conditions, including the payment of these fees. So none of that will change. There's bond ordinance on the agenda for later. Nothing you do here necessarily impacts that either. You can still pass the bond ordinance and stand ready to proceed. It seems to me the question would then become if at an upcoming work session or your first June meeting, you do change what your policy is, and perhaps this issue has closed by then, and the fee is going to be different, just retroactively applying it to this issue or the Homestead issue. And I think that's something to consider as well as you move forward. If you proceed with these two industrial revenue bond issues that you're considering, and something you do in the next few weeks would result in these fees changing, whether you want to include in those changes an ability to rebate some of that. And I suppose that always has the danger of opening up a can of worms. How far back do you go to rebate something that's been done? But... But um, but I think something for consideration, because this is all happening at the same time and kind of in a hurry. Uh, a- and and certainly part of your entire consideration of this process, and maybe it would continue. Uh, if it's being tabled, it's going to be considered again at a future meeting. And so uh, again, I wanted to offer that. I think you would have the ability to, if something closes before, you've changed your policy and you change your policy and it would result, you know, a week later, a week after closing or something, in a smaller origination fee. Um, a- again, suggest maybe you consider a rebate of of that to make it conform to whatever your new policy would be.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
And if we were to do that, would we rebate through passing and and this amending resolution that, uh, this motion would table? Or would we just rebate through a rebate process?
I think it would be both. May I? I I think if you consider this amending resolution or it gets tabled, um, a- and it's considered at the June meeting and the bonds have closed, uh, it's a good question. Do we really need to go back and do anything with this resolution? Or do we uh, just as part of the policy, try to address it? Uh, I think you could do it either way. There would, there would be no harm in considering this resolution and, you know, maybe it becomes a supplement to the bond transcript or something, um, coupled with a rebate. But I do think you could approach it either way.
Kevin, can we, could we possibly, could the council consider um, when it comes times, when it comes time to approve the bond, put a condition that they close not before, let's say, bonds to be closed someday certain after June seventh?
You, you could. Um, I would suggest consulting uh, the folks here to see if that's what they would want to do, because the pace at which we're moving is important as well. And so um, I would defer to them as to whether they would wanna perhaps delay their closing a little bit on the chance that they may get a change in the policy uh, or close and know they have the flexibility to address it either way and and hope and maybe appear before you again um, to try to work through this and perhaps get a rebate. And I don't, again, I don't know the answer to that question. There's some moving parts there that, you know, speed of closing and opportunity for rebate um, are things they would have to consider.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. LaFleur, uh, if you would please uh, come and tell us, what do you think the perspective of Catholic care would be if we tabled this and reconsidered it? Uh, and I mean, it, I don't think we have a consensus here to to do anything tonight. Uh, we, we're lacking information and we've want, we want to get some questions answered. Uh, so uh, what would you be, your perspective as?
So, so our preference would to be to not wait until June seventh, uh, as we're wanting to start that first weekend in June, but we're willing to wait. We understand the complexity of this ask that we've come to uh, you with tonight. And we will, you know, we will wait through that June seventh, uh, if that's um, you know, what you require. Um, we, we can adjust to that. We just can't go much past that. And again, we thank you. We know it's difficult.
Very good.
Complexity of a decision.
Thank you for that input. So I want to ask before we go for a vote, what specifically do we want to see from an analysis from staff to be presented to us on June seventh so that we can move forward with this? Ms. Hamburg.
I I always want to see, you know, everybody for-profit or not-for-profit pay less taxes and have less fees so they can go do their mission to go.
Yeah.
What they do best. But I want it applied fairly, and I don't want to wreck the budget. So I would like to see what we could do to align everybody on the same page and see what we could do to reduce it for all nonprofits across the board.
So you want to see what the effect of reducing it for all nonprofits across the board? Do you have a target, what you would think that reduction should be?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I I want Ted to go through and do an analysis of what different amounts of bonds would cost, whether or not we could do a flat fee or if it needs to be a sliding scale so that we cover all of our costs in the future, at least of the bonds.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think it would be interesting to get the historical perspective on this and how these fees have contributed to our budget and understand the potential impacts to changing the fee schedule as well as, I think what we would need is we would need as a council to align on the proposed new fee schedule. Uh, that was the new fee schedule for, for this type of issue.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think the council has, uh, the city has ever relied on these fees for anything other than covering the cost of the bonds. I don't think we spend them on roads or on fire or on water or anything like that. And if it was possible to waive all the fees and still cover the city expense, that might be an option. I'm not trying to make money here. I just want to make sure we cover everything that, so that's why I don't want to do it tonight. I don't want to say we'll do it for this amount and then find out it's gonna cost us another sixty thousand dollars or something. That's just a number out of the air. So, you know, you, I see over there, your numbers are going through your head, but but you, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to do something and then end up, ended up, it actually end up costing the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I think, I think uh, Mr. Welch summarized what I started with, is that we don't want to lose money on the administrative cost of administering this, but we don't need to make money on it. So we just need to understand what that cost is.
Okay.
I, I think I would like to ask staff, based on our prior budget, how have we benefited? If we, have we made money on this in the past? And if so, how has the community benefited? Because that's the opportunity cost of a change in policy.
So I have four requests of staff here. If I've heard these right, and let me, if I misstate them, tell me. Okay, so one of them was a, a proposal for input. Uh, what, what do you see as the cost proposal? Okay? Uh, I heard an analysis from Ted of different amounts of, of uh, these co- bond costs for different, different scales of bonds. And I heard a historical, a request for historical perspective. And uh, and then how has the city benefited from these uh, fees and the, and other bond transactions? Did that capture correctly? Okay. Uh, and then, so if we table this, we're tabling this for the next meeting. If I want to clarify that motion, Mr. Welch?
Uh, I'd table it until we have the answer, which may be the next meeting or the meeting after, or the meeting after. It depends on what it takes to get the data.
Mr. Lasher, what's your confidence level we could have something for June seventh?
Um, yeah, I mean, we can have some information for you, and and then the question will be, you know, where you're gonna uh, discuss it during the meeting? Or would you rather hold it to the workshop? And then we can do a presentation in June workshop and then have open discussion? Because I also heard something about um, you know, what would our new fee structure be if we're gonna make a change? Um, what's it gonna look like? So we'd have to have some proposals on what the new fee structure would be. And whether you want to just address nonprofits or for-profits or both. So it's really how much input you would like to have. We can get you some of these basic information at the next council meeting, but if you're wanting to look at revising the policy, I want some back and forth.
Yep. And correct me if I have this wrong, but I assume that we're talking about a policy for nonprofits and to leave the prop, the for-profit policy as it is, which actually today, we don't have two different policies, but we're looking at maybe making a separate policy for nonprofits.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, I believe that's correct, that we'd only do the nonprofits. And whether or not it should be a topic for a workshop, I think depends on how complex an issue it becomes. If Ted thinks he can explain it in two minutes, then we can do it at a council meeting. If it's gonna take fifteen minutes and questions and answers, then save it for a workshop.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, I guess my opinion on whether it should just be for nonprofits or for all businesses is probably based on what, what we think the cost drivers are and if we think they're different for those types of organizations. If we don't think they're different, then I'm not, I'm still thinking about this and I reserve the right to be wrong, but I'm not sure that we should distinguish between for-profits and not-for-profits if the cost drivers aren't different.
Mr. Mayor.
Mistress, uh, David.
I'm, I guess I'm aligned with, with it being, as uh, Mr. Welch spoke, and the reason is that I don't think we're competitive as a city right now in that we're one of a few that charges this for nonprofits. So I do think there's a difference.
Ms. Hamburg.
I, as I understand it from Mr. Smith, um, I, I would like to see if possible, it be across-the-board policy for both for-profits and nonprofits, because Woodland doesn't know if you're driving to a nonprofit or not when it's putting wear and tear on the road, so.
True.
Do you, we feel we have enough information that we could, staff could work this?
Um, yeah, I mean, if it's really up to the council, if you'd like to discuss this at the next meeting, we'll get you all the information and you could have a good discussion about what you want to do with the policy. I mean, obviously, we're gonna look at for pro- I mean, a lot of them don't differentiate, some of them do, so that'll be a, you know, a decision you'll have to make, whether you want to differentiate between profit and nonprofit and what those fees are. But we'll have all that information. We've got a good start already, so.
Okay. Very good. So I would look forward to presentation on June seventh, if, if that's possible. And, and staff recommendations as well. Okay. Very good. So I have a motion on table, uh, a, a motion to table this agenda item by Mr. Welch and a second by David. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion is tabled until June seventh.
What was the vote, Mr. Mayor?
Four, zero, unless I didn't hear that correctly.
I was three over here, but I can't hear that side.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you for uh, requesting a clarification. All right. So considering an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air to issue healthcare facility revenue bonds, so the Catholic Care Center is refinancing a portion of our previous bonds as well as making some improvements to their current facilities. And we've already heard Mr. LaFleur tell us about those improve, improvements. Resolution determining the viability of issuing IRBs has been approved as well as a public hearing held. So this ordinance authorized the issuance of the IRBs for Catholic Care Center. And then Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell is here to answer any questions.
I'll start by saying, I, I would recommend that you still pass this, this evening if there's any question about that. And then that gives Catholic Care sort of the option, Catholic Care and interest to set a closing date that's prior to June seventh, uh, if they need to do that. Uh, or it could be just after June seventh. It could be June eighth or something. And if we waited until June seventh to pass this publication and things like that that still have to occur, um, it would delay it a little bit. And so the ordinance simply approves the form of all the bond documents, which I think you probably have voluminous documents in your agenda packet. But then authorizes the issuance of the bonds. So with this action, you're authorized to issue the bonds. You stand ready to issue and and close on the bonds and can take, take cues from interest, the bond purchaser and the, the borrower in Catholic Care. So I, I just wanted to mention that and, and again, stand for questions if you have specific questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch. Or Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas to issue its healthcare facilities revenue bonds, Catholic Care Center Series twenty-twenty-two and one or more series to provide funds for the purpose of financing and refinancing improvements to healthcare and retirement facilities owned and operated by Catholic Care, Inc., and approving certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of said bonds and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch.
Can I offer amended language? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to, to include that, um, everything Mr. Smith said, but also um, authorizing the amendment of certain dates identified in the ordinance? Just to give that flexibility, because we do have some specific firm dates written in, June first and other dates, that I think if we had that amen, that ability to amend those dates.
In, in the bond documents, right?
Yes.
Um, y- yes. I, I think that change would be fine. I think if documents are approved and substantially the form presented. So if, if we're just talking about the closing date changing a few days, I don't think it's, i- if you didn't add that, I, I would say I think it's fine, but um, I always like to be more specific and, and acknowledge we're passing the ordinance, we're approving all of the bond documents, um, with the understanding that some dates and closing dates may change.
So it sounds like it, it's up to you, whether you're comfortable with it as is with that general understanding. Sounds like we have some.
I amend my motion.
Okay.
Do you second the amendment?
No, I was comfortable with it the way it was.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Smith to uh, accept the motion as amended, uh, and I do not have a second for that.
I have a second.
Mr. David seconds that motion. Thank you. Any other discussion before we go for a vote? And this is a roll call vote, so I'll ask this uh, city clerk to call the roll when we're ready. Any other discussion? The city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to item C, considering this is a ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds. And this is, at our February fifteenth meeting, uh, council approved a letter intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the homestead senior residences to construct civ- senior living apartments. At our April fifth meeting, council held a public hearing where taxpayers and interested parties were given the opportunity to speak on the matter. At the same time, the council approved a resolution to start the process of issuing the bonds. The ordinance is to issue the bonds now comes before council for approval. Kevin Cowan is also here to uh, speak with uh, with you about those bonds with Gilmore and Bell.
So um, not long before I, I came here, this, I guess it was before five P M., uh, I received a message and a request from the Homestead Health folks uh, that you tabled this. And the, the background is that there were some additional comments m- made by the low-income tax credit partner of the Homestead Health LLC to some of the documents. And there was one, w- one comment, and, and it sort of goes to Jackie's uh, last, last point on the last ordinance, that we considered so minor that, that we wouldn't worry about that and, and would recommend passage of the ordinance, but sort of admonished or, or made the parties aware. If you think there are gonna be other changes that could be more substantial than this, we'd like to know that and, and maybe it makes sense to table it. Um, and so their response was, there may be changes to the bond documents that are more substantial. Uh, the, the, the suggested change had to do with notice, who gets notice of certain things under the bond documents? And they think there may be more substantial bond document changes. And so um, it was at their request uh, that I suggest that perhaps you, you table this. And it may play into some of the timing on, on your origination fee um, discussion and policy. fee discussion and policy items as well.
Appreciate that. So just a question for city attorney, if we do.
Just a question for our city attorney, if we do table this, this is an ordinance which normally calls a roll call vote, but a tabling, would that require a roll call vote as well?
I would recommend you stick with the roll call vote, even to table it.
Okay, thank you. So at the request of the applicant, I think is that appropriate term, applicant, question's made to table it. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Oh, question.
Before we motion to table it, do we have a date to table it to, or is this open-ended as well?
I would recommend that it be tabled until the next meeting. I know, and maybe Ty and others at the city know that Homestead is very anxious to move forward with this, and I'm sure we're not happy about eventually requesting that you table it. So I would be shocked if they haven't worked through some of those issues before June 7th.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
One question. Just curious, did we get any feedback from Homestead on our origination fee? Did they ask for a fee reduction, or were they okay with the fee? Just wondering if that was a similar conversation as we, the city, had with Catholic Care, if it was different?
Yes, we had the same discussion. They requested that the fee be waived. I shared, just like I did with the Catholic Care, that we don't delineate, and there's, the typical fee is 1%. And so in their documentation, it was a 1%.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to table the ordinance for multifamily housing revenue bonds for Homestead.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any additional questions or discussion?
Do we need to specify until the next meeting, or?
You can, but you don't have to.
Okay.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Ms. Emily, Emily Campers?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And the motion carries four to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. We're on to item D, consideration of a bid removal and replacement of fire hydrants. So Seton County Fire Department tests and inspects all fire hydrants in Bel Air and provides a report of hydrants that are in need of repair or replacement. The public work staff have made repairs to all the hydrants that were identified in the 2021 report. Six hydrants were identified as leaking or difficult to operate and are in need of replacement. Staff is recommending that one fire hydrant be removed completely and a valve installed in its place. A hydrant is no longer needed because there was a new hydrant installed across the street. Staff recommended that one hydrant be removed permanently, five hydrants be removed and replaced, and four gate valves be installed to allow for better water system isolation. Funding is available in the water system repair budget for this project. Our city engineer, Ann Stevens, is she here tonight?
She had a death in the family, so she is out of town, and I think she'll be back tomorrow, I believe. So if there's any questions, I can answer them, Mayor.
Okay. Very sorry about our loss. Any questions for city manager?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
This seemed pretty straightforward, so I'll make a motion to accept the bid from utility maintenance contractors in an amount not to exceed $39,175 for the removal and replacement of fire hydrants and installation of valves and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David, and that was a motion to not exceed $39,175. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So consideration of a bid to outsource sanitary sewer cleaning. So each year, staff identifies neighborhoods that are in need of sewer cleaning. Sewer cleaning is necessary to prevent stoppages in sewer lines. This year, Central Park, Elk Creek, Park Vista, Lawn Terrace, Eagle Lake, and West Lake neighborhoods need to be cleaned and maintain the EPA recommended schedule of cleaning every three to five years. In addition, televising is done to identify conditions that can create stoppages such as intruding tree roots, protruding taps, or accumulated solids. So any questions for our city manager? We've done these before, so if no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to accept the bid from utility maintenance contractors in the amount of $50,313.20 for 2022 outsourced sanitary sewer cleaning and televising.
I'll second that.
Have a motion from Mr. David and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So I have a memorandum, easy for me to say, memorandum of understanding between the city of Bel Air and Kansas and Terry Beal Municipal Court Judge. So Terry Beal has been the Bel Air Municipal Judge since 2016. Judge Beal does a great job, is respected by many and appreciated by Bel Air staff. Memorandum of Understanding is used to state responsibilities, expectations, and compensation instead of a contract. The only change that is being proposed is compensation increasing to 100, or $575 per court session, which is up from $475 per session in 2016. This will be the first raise for Judge Beal since 2016. Any questions for city attorney or city manager?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
How long do the court sessions typically last?
There's two court sessions. The first one is a 7:00 PM. They'll average 100 people to 150, maybe three hours, three to four hours. Courts probably three hours, then he's there early, staying late. So I would say probably four to five hours would be that court. And then we have another session in the afternoons, which is for trials, and those typically will last one to two hours for trials. And there's much less of those when they have actual trials.
And just to clarify, those trials are, we have one trial session once a month, typically?
Yes.
So those trials are a result of the 7:00 PM court session where the 100 people show up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
That seems like a fair rate, I think, to me. No increases since 2016 is a long time. I'll make a motion to approve that memorandum of understanding between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and Terry Beal and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item G, agreement with professional services with Garber for Cedar Pass, which was formerly called Rock Springs 5th, amount of $507,000. Council accepted petitions and approved resolution for Cedar Pass addition, formerly known as Rock Spring addition, earlier this meeting. Oh, and that was in the consent agenda, wasn't it? Okay. The developer has asked Garber to continue as engineer for design and construction services. The engineering costs associated with this project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Any questions of Garber or staff? And I don't, do we have anybody from Garber?
Yes, Chris Boll is here.
Very good. Thank you. Didn't see you back there. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Garber for Cedar Pass, Rock Springs 5th, in the amount of $507,000, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. David and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any other discussion? Call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item H, development agreement for Cedar Pass addition. So city code requires the developer file a development agreement with the flat, the final plat. The final plat was approved by council on April 19th. The development agreement outlines developers' responsibilities before and after construction. The agreement now comes before council for approval. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make the motion to accept the development agreement for Cedar Pass addition and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item I is a developer's agreement with Homestead Senior Landing, and the original development agreement for Homestead Senior Landing was approved by council on April 5th meeting. Since then, the developer has requested a few minor changes, including allowing special events in the apartments, community apartments, community room to be approved by the city manager, allowing different ownership of separate development phases, and allowing use of undeveloped property as agricultural land. City staff reviewed the requested revisions and did not have any concerns. So staff did request that a paragraph be added to the top of the development agreement indicating the previous agreement had been approved by the city council but was never filed with the county. This version of the development agreement shall supersede any previous versions. And are there any questions for our city attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Can you provide some context on the event situation and why the city would approve events at the venue there? The changes that they requested in order to have events in the community room?
Okay, that part.
Why is that necessary?
Yeah, that part, I, they may have talked to Ty. I don't have that clarity. I thought you were saying what brought us here, what other changes brought us to this point, but...
We have a process to go through for special events, and typically, someone wants to have, you know, a block party or something like that for the neighborhood. They'll come in, file an application, we'll review it, and then make sure police is aware of it, then I can sign off on it. And so they wanted to be able to hold community events for their folks there and wanted to be able to just do that through an email or something without filling out a special events permit and that kind of stuff. So it was just a little easier process for them for their own residents.
When I think of like, community room, you know, I've been to events like in apartment complexes where they have like a really large living room with a fireplace and some couches and some tables, and those are often used for people to have birthday parties or small family gatherings when you can't have, when you have more people than all fit in your apartment. Is it more than that? Is it like, hey, they're wanting to have events where the streets are closed and like, I guess I'm just not understanding what types of events these might be. Is it, are they going to need permission to have like the birthday parties in their community room?
No, it would just be when they would spill out into the parking lot or something like that. Because like you said, typically, they could do your, you know, just smaller gatherings. That's not an issue. But it would be if they wanted to have, you know, something larger that they would utilize outside their parking area, something like that. Again, it's typically for their own staff or their own residents.
I'd like to pursue that a tad farther. I thought all these streets in there were going to be private, so why would we care if they blocked their own streets?
Well, then you start getting into like, if they have an event with a banner or with a tent or with these nuisance items, then this is, this would allow them to have such events outside and bring in food trucks or whatever other things without having to go through a full planning commission process.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
It sounds like the proposed changes in this developer agreement are less restrictive than what is typical based on our current policy and code. Is that correct?
Correct. This would allow them to have an avenue to, that is less restrictive.
Okay. I think I'm okay with that, and I don't have an issue moving forward, but I might ask that we like do a deep dive on that policy and/or section of our code in one of our workshops, just so that we can understand that a little bit further and maybe even review that.
So specific to special events?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't, we obviously can't do that now as part of this, and it wouldn't be appropriate to, but it might be a good thing to just touch base on.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to accept the developer's agreement for Homestead Senior Landing and authorize the mayor to sign.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So executive session, I do need to request a executive session. I would like a 10-minute executive session, but I also want a five-minute break, so we can either do a 15-minute executive session preceded with a five-minute break and then go on to executive session, or we can do two motions. Your call. And this is for, it'll be just the council members and mayor for personnel, non-elected personnel matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of non-elected personnel pursuant to the KSA 754319 exception for the same. Invite in the city council and the mayor. The meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes. In the open meeting, we'll resume in city council chambers at 8:57 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're in executive session for 15 minutes. So the first five minutes is for... No binding act, oh, I'm sorry. We held an executive session, no binding action was taken, and I'll call the meeting back to order. So item fifteen is to discuss future issues. Does anyone have additional items to discuss on future issues to mention? Now we'll move on to sixteen, adjournment. Do we want adjourned?
Mr. Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. David.
I'll second.
You second? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. David and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any discussion? Nobody ever wants to talk about this. Okay, call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to nothing. We are adjourned.